Welcome to the first meeting in February. Thank you for coming. Open the meeting for the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board, they do so.
Is Maritome back at Ross's Point? I got a thing in mail. This has nothing to do with politics or anything. I got a letter of mail from Jerry Favrell about redistricting village property on Montgomery Street. So I checked around and how, what's this about? And she found out that it has to do with transferring land to Rico throwing up for the fuel tanks that he put on village property. And there's gonna be a meeting on, a meeting about the redistricting part of it on February 19th, which I won't be able to attend because I'm gonna be out of town for something important. But one of my questions were is that, I know a little bit of that, the background on some of the stuff that's going on with it. I wanted to know, was a village building permit issued for him to relocate those fuel tanks there in the first place?
One, Tom, I can't answer that. That was done before even on that with mayor.
No, they were, they were put in there six years ago. That's when he put them in. Yeah.
We didn't know a thing about it. The village, the village did not know.
Okay, then that answers that question. He didn't have a permit.
I would assume not.
I mean, I asked Bob Rascal and he said he didn't have one then.
Yeah, I would assume not.
Okay. Then, the, the second question I have, if he doesn't have a permit, then why didn't we go after it from the standpoint of a violation? Built something without a building permit and turns out to be on somebody else's property. To me, anybody else in town, they would've been told, get him out of there and move him and he would've been fine. And then, you know, so why not just have him just remove the, the fuel tanks?
We talked to our attorney about this. And his advice was, we sent him a letter. He had 30 days to respond to it. Either you buy the piece of property or you remove the tanks. And that was his set. We did not want to have, we kind of understand if those tanks leak, guess who was gonna be responsible?
I know, that's why they should be removed.
Well, that's why we want him to own the property, that it's not ours.
You know, like, for, for one thing, I noticed in Renee's letter, he said that this has been contested since the 70s, the founder, that's not contested at all. The village bought that property from the Rockland Railroad in 1958 for a thousand dollars. I got the deed right here in his envelope, if you want to see it.
I will, yeah.
And they, they own it. And, and what Rico had a problem with was, on the west side of the road, the Rockland tracks were 100 feet wide, the right of way. And on the east side of Montgomery Street, because that 17 and a half feet was sold to the village to put the sewer plant up, he narrows down to like 81 and a half or 82 feet. And that's been there 20 years before he bought the property, before Brishnevsky had it, or Nichols, or any of the other people at all. So it's not contested, it's, it's recorded in the deeds in, in Cleveland County. So my contention is, is that, you know, in fact, I told him that. I told him where the boundaries were and everything when I was mayor. Now, the other thing is, you don't know about adverse possession, right? You know, it's like squatters' rights. That doesn't apply to public property. But I checked with the attorney about something else about that years ago. That you can't get adverse possession just because you built something on something that belongs to the public. But if you're gonna sell that land, which I don't think the village should be in the business of selling lakefrontage property, and there was a petition presented to the board back in the 80s about the same thing, 180 people in a village signed about selling the property on the lakefront to that marina, why isn't he going out to bid? You know, you can't just take a piece of property and, and just pick a price and, and just sell it to them.
Not according to our attorney, we can't.
Well, why would you want to? I mean, what kind of public policy is that?
If you're not public policy, Tom, it's to get out of the liability of the leaking tank that were there. If those tanks were to leak today, if they were to leak today, the village would be responsible.
Exactly, so you tell them to take them out.
Did you see how those tanks were put in?
Yeah, I watched them. I watched Dennis Richard put them in.
I wish then, you would've come to the board then.
I just assumed he had a permit. I mean, I was, you know...
Because we didn't know it. We did not know it.
I've been pretty good about staying out of the middle of this since I got out of office. I says, you know, if I'm not gonna be, you know, doing it day to day like you guys are doing it, you know, run with it. But, and the other tanks were already in the water on the north side, and they're still in there. And for some reason, I think they're bigger tanks maybe, he put the other ones in, in the parking lot. And I just assumed something that blatant, I figured, well, he must have a corv engineer's permit, village permit, and everything else in line to do something like that. Surely nobody'd be that, that blatant to do it. But if he didn't do any of that stuff, I think you ought to tell him to remove the tanks and, and look into legal action against him. I mean, you, you certainly don't owe it to him to do that. And then the other thing is, if you get this arbitrarily established price at $5,000, does that include all the legal fees that are going into this?
I would not say so.
I'll bet you, I'll bet you he's not paying all the work that Renee's doing to change the, the zoning on the street and create a different commercial district down there and all this other stuff.
None of that being changed, the only thing is, it's a subdivision of a piece of property.
Yeah, but you know that doesn't come cheap, George. And you've dealt with lawyers for 10 years on this stuff. They don't do that for free. That's gonna, I'll bet you that when this thing's done, you're gonna pay at least $5,000 to have that all switched around. But again, why would you want to? Why would you want to take village property, right where you're putting this, this boardwalk and the boat ramp and all this other stuff, and let a guy put, without even asking you, just put, just because he wants to, put underwater fuel tanks in and then bury them? I don't understand why, that's not...
Number one, Tom, when, when we got the grant for that piece of property to, to fix up that boat launch, we had to have it surveyed, and that's when we found out about the tanks.
Right.
Surveyor came to us and I said, holy mackerel.
Right.
And the Department of State said the best thing to do at the time is sell him the piece of property, get rid of it, you don't want that liability, you're not even gonna use it, it's not even gonna come into the boat launch, and it didn't. If you take a look at it...
No, it doesn't come into boat launch.
And it's all big, all big rocks right there.
But, you know, I just, I'd have to move it.
Okay, stop right there though, because the big thing was, Tom, if we weighed it and we tried to appeal it and spend more money and stuff, it was gonna hold up the rest of the money and everything.
Well, yeah, but you don't have to appeal it. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But like I'm saying, and I agree with the liability thing, and I, I applaud you for looking out for the village for that, because I know how that's about. But I mean, this is a guy that punched holes in our water, our sewer outfall line. And we had to spend thousands of dollars getting that corrected, and he dragged acres to it and then refused to pay us for it. I mean, we had to take him to court for that. But, I'm just saying, if he puts something on village property and it doesn't belong there and it's creating a hazard, you just order him to remove it, and that's the end of it. You can't condone that. How can you condone, basically?
We're not condoning it.
Well, if you're...
That's why we're selling him the property, because the advice, the Department of State and our attorney said, you don't need it, the best thing to do is to get rid of it. Didn't hold up the projects. And we didn't want to hold up that project.
Yeah, but how long would it have been holding up if you told them to get it off of there? It would've been done by now.
Maybe, and maybe not. If you know Rico very well, and you wish you do, and we've been in court, and you know that.
Yeah.
We would've spent more money on Rico.
I mean, I just reviewed the file today at home. I have almost all the documents from this thing when it started up until, I don't have anything current, you know, real current, but...
Yeah.
That whole marina was built without permits. And then after the fact, you know, 500 yards of fill dumped in the lake, and then after the fact, they gave him an order to remove it, and then he, then they kowtowed and they said, okay, we'll let you leave it in, but don't do it again. You know, and tires in the lake, same thing. Dumped all the tires in the lake without a permit, well, leave them in, but, you know, we gave him a three-year conditional thing to put 20 mooring boys out there when I was mayor, to recover after his fire in 2000, whenever the fire was. And, uh, they said if he had 20 things out there for three years that would give him a chance to recover economically and financially, then take him out. The mooring boys are still out there, he's still running them out. I mean, I just, it seemed like every time he does whatever he wants, and then the village rolls over and lets him, lets him keep it.
I don't think we rolled over, Tom. I, I take exception to that, because I'm gonna tell you what, there were some damn hard negotiations with him. He didn't want to buy it at all.
He could've been put in jail, George.
I know.
He didn't have anything to argue with.
Could be, could be, could be, does not be. I tell you, I, I had a right to hear with him like you had. And the best thing I'd like to do is just see him disappear, but they're gonna have to do it, we do it, I won't do it.
I won't.
Instead of causing more controversy and more money, the best thing to do was to just tell him the property.
No, I think, I, I'm gonna say something here. I'll take an exception to what the mayor just said about Rico packing up his bags and leaving. I think he's done a lot for this village. I think that he's done a wonderful thing to this pier. He's done a great job on Montgomery Street, bringing people, Canadians, bringing a lot of money to this community. And to just arbitrarily say, yeah, if he put some tanks in there, you know, at one point in time, there was nothing there. It wasn't village property because he filled it in. And if you draw an arbitrary line, if you keep going halfway across the lake, you could probably take half of his restaurant. The rest of the, if you wanna, if you wanna draw a line from, you know, from the east hole, from the west to the east and continue out into the water, I mean, how far out do we want to go? Do we want to go out a mile and a half, go across into Albert? I think there's a lot of things that are misconstrued. I think that if you had a problem with Mr. Rico when you were mayor, you should've addressed it then.
Well, I did.
Well, he didn't bring the moorings in, did he? But they're still out there.
Well, they were supposed to be done within three years. We passed them in 97. I was not in office, in office then.
But, you, you know, if, then the village, the rest of the village board should've taken care of that. You can't be blaming this guy and, and the rest of the people sitting on this board. And I think that we did the right thing, we did the right thing by letting Rico keep his tanks there. We're gonna give him that piece of property. The only reason we're having a subdivision on that piece of property is because we're mandated to.
Of course.
I think it's the best interest for this village and this community to let that business continue to run, because if we didn't have that business to run, there wouldn't be a restaurant there. There wouldn't be a place for people to, I think he's probably got 250 boats out there that he's moored. I, there's, you know, I, we got Marina down the street, we got Mas Marina, we got...
But what's that got to do with Rico? Nothing.
It doesn't have any, yeah, it has something to do, because these people, these people are trying to, they're trying to be businessmen, you know? And businesses, sometimes you gotta bend a little bit. If you want a business to continue, you gotta bend a little bit. And maybe if we're giving him a little slice of land that nobody's gonna use, Tom, you know, maybe it's a benefit to him, maybe it is, but it's gonna bring another, it's gonna bring, it's gonna continue to keep that marina functioning.
Well...
And it's not hurting anything. It's not hurting one thing, except maybe your feeling and a few other people's feeling. That's all it does. It doesn't hurt my feelings that he's got, and I'm sure most of the people in this village would feel the way I do, that it doesn't do any harm to sell him that piece of property because it doesn't do the village any good. And it would've tied up our, our boat launch, it would've tied up the, the, the gazebo that we, the pier on, on Montgomery Street, it would've tied everything up. We needed to get that property cleared, and we did the right thing. We got rid of it. Now we have to have a public hearing because...
Because you gotta fix it after the fact. That's what you're doing, John.
We didn't know, we didn't know that we needed a public hearing, and I didn't realize that you did.
Yeah, well, the problem is, the problem with your line of thinking there is twofold. One is, you're entrusted with preserving and protecting village property and for the good of all the village, not, not for one businessman.
And I think that's what we...
Number two, if you knew the facts and the history of that business, and all the times that things have been given to him that didn't belong to him, like, like taking Phil in the lake and all the other stuff that he's done over the years, you'd have a different view of him, because he hasn't followed any of the guidelines or rulings for 20 years. You just don't know that because you haven't read all the corv engineer things and the letters back and forth and the petitions from the village.
If he, if he was mandated to do things in the state, whoever, whatever department it was, and they, and they allowed him to do it, and they didn't find him and they didn't tell him to get the stuff out, that's not our problem.
What they had was, they had a, well, yeah, but when it is something that you can control, then it is your problem. What, what the problem was, and I'm not gonna hold you up all night here, George, I ain't come here to do that, but, um, the problem is, for years, the corv engineer permits were run on New York City. And they had problems down there with, like, major barge things and, you know, 10,000 gallon oil spills in the harbor and all that stuff. They couldn't care less about some little marina up in Rouse's Point. It's just that the federal law said, since it's federal waterways, they were the, they were the controlling agency. So they let him, they didn't come up here, they didn't send a guy all the way from New York City to check this stuff very often. And oftentimes when they did, it was after the fact, and he knew that. And he knew this. To sit there and hire a guy, a contractor, and go move some, some fuel tanks without any kind of permits and then you say, oh, okay, I guess we'll just, we'll just basically give it to you. I mean, that's just not right.
What's my thing?
It makes your zoning laws, it makes all your building permit things a joke if you do that. If you let somebody correct it after the fact with no penalty or, or anything like that, it just, it throws it all out the window for the guy that's trying to get a building permit to put a porch on the back of his house or something and has to move it two feet because that's what the building code says, which is what we all do. But he doesn't have to do that because he didn't bother to get a permit to do it first.
Well, I think 99% of the people in this village try to do the right thing. You know, and if you...
Yeah, it's 90%.
Okay, so if he's the, he's the one, there's a lot of things, you know, when you look, when you start looking around, there's a lot of things that were done in the past that we aren't held accountable for. You know, there's things like paving streets, getting right of ways on, on people's properties and different things. This is one particular area where, like the mayor said, we, we, we started to get a, uh, we, we had to, we're trying to get a grant to do the downtown, we're trying to get a grant to do the waterfront, and then after doing a survey, surveying some of the property, we, we saw that we owned some piece of property on that end where Rico is now, that bound, that was the boundary of the village property. And it was just a small piece of property that, there was things that were already there. Things were already there, so we're gonna tell him, it, it does, no, it didn't do us any good to have him yank it out of there. It didn't do us any good. What was, what, what, what good would it serve? What good would it serve everybody? To have him yank all those tanks out of there, and it would hurt his business more than helping. And we're here to help people.
What you're doing is you're throwing on all the work of previous, you ought to see the letters that Terry Dunn wrote him, explain to him that he didn't own that property and just stop putting things in right there, in that exact spot.
Well, he didn't own that property because there wasn't anything there until he filled it in. It was water.
It's called riparian rights, John. Anybody knows that. You can't go out and then cut across somebody else's lakefrontage and say it's, it's nothing there and it's, now it's yours. That's just, that's just common real estate law. How would you like it if somebody came across and say, if somebody just put a thing right across in front of your house and you couldn't even see the lake anymore? They'd be affecting your riparian rights if you own the other side of the street, which I know on your, down your end you don't, but if you did, that's village property that belongs to the village, they bought, they paid for it. And you let him fill in on the other side of it, and, when you buy lakefrontage, when you buy waterfrontage, it means you own the water there, the access to the water. I mean, you own the water itself, but you own, you control in front of your piece of shoreline. Just like I would've found it out.
It wasn't done.
It was done over and over and over, and he just waited till somebody wasn't looking and slid it in again.
Well, Tom, the endeavor is, is, it's a done deal, the lawyers, the deeds have all gone and drawn and everything, they're just waiting for the subdivision to finalize it. You complained to me about, a month ago, about him having stuff on the property.
I appreciated that, I, I very, I meant to tell you about that. I appreciate very much the time you...
The other thing, the other thing that's being done is that this spring, as soon as it's done, that property's gonna be surveyed and some pins are gonna be put in so everybody knows where the property line is, right? Including across the street, which we own that boat launch. It's all gonna be done this spring, it's, it's in the works right now, so that there will be no more questions with Mr. Rico.
Yeah, we did that and I think...
And nobody can find the pin.
Yeah.
Well, you know why and I know why, and I ain't gonna say anything, I'm just leaving.
And did you notice, did you notice those, those racks that he's got on village property for mass? I mean, you cleaned up all the new stuff from this year in the front, but you look in the back, man, the pine trees?
I did look in the back.
It's all on village property.
Well, it's all gonna be surveyed at that, that side, and pins put in. I mean, you should've seen the phone call I got from him when he got the letter.
Well, I bet.
Well, that's all right, took that one with a grain of salt too.
But I mean, you just have to, you know, you, you know, I've heard this for 25 years with him, is that he's good for business in the village, he's good for this, he's good for that, and, you know, I'd like to see where the money's going that's so good for the village. I mean, fought and got the taxes cut in half of what he paid for the place. Everybody's self-contained on there, those people don't go wrong town. We don't have a supermarket anymore to, for them to spend any money on there, they don't buy anything at the liquor store very much because they get it all at the duty-free store.
You don't know that for a fact. I see those people come by my house every day sometime, every time that they're here. They're up and down that street, they're going to the restaurants, I see them come back with grocery bags. I see people getting in cars and driving to the grocery store, they stop by me, I can't tell you how many times they ask me, where's the liquor store, where's the grocery store, and where's the restaurant that we can eat? You may be living 100 yards or 100 feet north of him.
I saw those people crossing the border for 30 years, John, they all brought their food and liquor with them, going to his marina and all the marinas. And you can't blame them. You can't blame them. You're going someplace for a weekend.
Well, I mean, just to generalize and say, I think we gotta, you know, move on and, you know...
Anybody else want to address the board, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm Lorraine Bordeaux. I went to, um, the Women's Go Red Breakfast on Friday morning, and sitting at the table, and because there were so many people in there, I didn't catch her last name. But she found out that, um, two of us at the table were from Rouse's Point. And she is writing a book on walking vacations in, uh, different communities. And she wanted me to be sure to tell anybody in Rouse's Point how proud they can be of all the hard work and the dedication and the volunteering to do all the work on the waterfront, do everything that they're trying to do to the downtown and everything. And she says, it's wonderful to see a community take pride in themselves, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Lorraine.
You're welcome.
Anybody else at this time? And if not, you'll have a chance to attend a meeting, minutes of the previous meeting, or do you have the minutes of January 22nd? Is there any additions or corrections? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2008.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, you all have copies of the bills. There are no additions or reasons.
I'll make a motion to bid bills, sir.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The first item I have came from Letta, Mark Letta, excuse me. Honorable Mayor Rivers, as a follow-up to our January 16th away meeting, this is to reconfirm that NICE exposition with respect to our franchise boundaries in the Rouse's Point area remain unchanged. As I understand your request, you indicated the following area of concern, which includes the following roads, Ashwood Drive, Columbus Drive, and Carrier Way. We appreciate your follow-up, but NICE can look forward to working with the village in the future, respectfully, Mark Letta.
That is a meeting that we had with Gas, Electric, Mr. Pelkey, trustee Moore, and myself, the table, the residents on those streets would like to become part of the village. Power is an ongoing thing, it has been ongoing from the day they built up there, I guess. Excuse me. But, uh, there might be some change in that though, because Gas and Electric and Rochester Electric are being bought out by some Spanish company, and the Public Service Commission is holding a big hearing on the 22nd of February at the city of Plasberg. We don't know, they'll be in, they'll be like National Red, which is a English company now.
The next item I have was from the Plasberg North Country Chamber of Commerce, an invitation to the 50th Annual St. Patrick's Day Breakfast, Monday, March 17th, at SUNY Angel Center Ballroom, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. Anybody would like to attend? Tickets are $23 if paid by March 1st.
Anyone want to go?
I do.
Can you go over here?
Can I make a motion to allow...
Anybody else want to go? Besides you.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to vote to the Chamber of Commerce St. Patrick's Day Breakfast.
Second. Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Reports of the mayor and the board of trustees. Now, first item on the agenda. Last Thursday, I attended a session in Plasberg on the DOT safe routes the school ran. Should've stayed home. 400, eh, give or take, $480,000 for seven counties. How many school districts is involved? How many villages, how many cities, how many towns? And that, I, we're talking about putting the sidewalk in front of the, uh, school up here, but it hasn't been one for years this year. In fact, we, we told the school that we were, we're putting the budget for this year. Thought maybe I could get it paid for by the state. When they told me I had to go out to bid for it, and I had to have engineering and a PE engineering license to staff it, I said, I said to the guy, I said, you out of your mind? I said, I got three guys put that sidewalk in in four days and you'll never know it and it'd be better than what I could do to get it contracted out. Just can't do it. And I said, you know, the one lady got up and says, you know, I'm wasting my time here, got up, walked out. And I couldn't believe it, 483, the bulk of the money went to the city of New York for traffic signs, for traffic lights and everything else. I said, I don't even like, why you people even bother to own this, this workshop? Because what you get, you know, by the time you pay all the advertising and everything else, the 480,000 is gone and nobody's gonna get anything.
$3 a kid.
Melissa would like to have a work session on the revitalization project status, February 11th. Is that all right with the board?
Fine.
What do you want to do it? I don't know, I'll get back to you. And then she wants to have a public information session on March 10th for the public.
Do you have a requirement for her?
I don't know, she did any time, she just picked that date, so if that date is good for everybody, that's Monday, that's next Monday. And she picks it off Monday after the board meetings. Do you want a morning, noon, night, or midnight?
I don't think I can work on Mondays, but I'll do it, so...
Pardon?
I don't get to work Mondays, but I'll do it.
Okay, after, after.
Yeah, I have to work. Or I might be better.
How about you, Brian?
Uh, like 3:30, 4 o'clock.
Yeah, that would be good for Melissa too, because she teaches, 3:30, 4 o'clock.
I'm awake.
If you're awake, okay, well, tell her that.
When, when are you going to have it?
March, uh, February, November.
That, what time?
Say, uh, 3:30. That's with the board. The information session should probably be in the evening sometime, so the people can attend. Get with Melissa. Kids want to see what she had for her time there.
Do you want to authorize, I'll have to a legal notice on that, because this could be a public.
Okay. Last thing on my agenda is a request from Jerry Farrell for the summer performances. Now, she has brought that to the board, or it was all read last meeting, as the board, as the board to make a decision on Willie Wonka Jr. coming to Ross's Point.
Willie Wonka. Was I personally going to check on that or something?
Just funny, it's just my asking for the budget next year.
There's nothing in the budget this year for that. Although, it would be next year's budget, yeah.
Hey, why not try it? Or things are better.
Okay, you know, the other thing she's looking for is starting a one evening band concert in the park again, I guess. Or no, local resistance to give concerts. In the park, I don't think that's a... You want $500 of a budget for that purpose. Of course, that's a budget item, and we'll argue about that probably later on this month. Farmer's market. We have that one young lady that's been coming for years, she's selling corn right out of here. We have tried for years to get other people to come in, nobody, nobody seems to want to do it. And she does quite well out here.
Does it, I got the impression if it was going to be in the park, it was going to be more of, you know, like, have downtown Plasberg apartment market, where they have a group of, where you sell hats and different. I didn't, I didn't think it was just, uh, did you, reading this, what did you have?
I thought it was going to be right out here, just try to get some more people to come, besides the lady that sells corn.
Lorraine, did you talk to Jerry? Did she mention that to you?
No, I'm sorry, I haven't talked to her about that.
Where's she going to Hawaii? You can't believe it, right?
No.
Why don't we look at stuff that we've been tied up at work, so I haven't talked?
Well, we got work sessions coming up on the budget, and we'll see where we stand.
We'll have to bring an answer, Karen.
Well, the summer performances, I think she'd like to have an answer because she used the book.
I think it's a good idea too, same thing. Short summer, why don't you try to do the work as you can?
Board's decision.
You want to put money in budget now or what?
Well, we can't, we're working on the budget.
She just wants the okay to go ahead.
So we give her the okay to go ahead, and then we're going to end up putting money in the budget. On one.
Was another week, two weeks for her?
Yeah, it was.
I don't know, she's going to Hawaii or a trip, we need to, Bobby's at downtown, or before she goes. She's always gotten in mind there. You want to postpone it for next meeting again?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. That's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, uh, trustee Menfield was unable to attend tonight, so I'll take over a couple of her items. First item on her agenda is to request an executive session to discuss public works personnel. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, and the second item on the agenda is to request an executive session to discuss office personnel, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And I think I'll leave the signs for Kelly till she comes back for the next meeting.
Oh, I think they want to get these signs ordered, made, the parking signs, that's, that's... The only one that we got really any questions about is straight pier. We've had these for two weeks now.
Yeah, I'm probably the...
I think everybody, John, I think everybody's agreed that on the parking, that's it.
Yeah, I agree on the first top three, but I don't agree on the, on the one that's for the pier. I just think it should be more in tune with the, uh, the earthy designation of the, uh, instead of weight sign.
Anybody see that?
Yeah.
You always let her jump, don't you?
I don't like that, I don't like the weight.
Well, it's because of the construction type, you think it should be different. I can, I can pass it on.
The one that appears.
So they can see it.
And that's the color it was going to be?
That's the green.
If you can envision this over the pier, the gazebo, there would be that, instead of, the original one was brown. Well, I think they should be Ross's Point blue, like the...
No, 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 all the signs that we're doing now are that.
All the other signs.
The signs coming into the village, the library signs, uh, the boat launch signs are all this, and we want to try to stay with that same theme.
Well, why are you going to stay with the blue?
What blue?
Too late now, I guess. All our trucks, they're Ross's Point.
Oh, that's changed, that's all changed. When you, when they buy a new truck, you're going to see different, different signs on.
You say? Why couldn't you stay with that? That was nice. What the heck is the matter?
Go see Tashi, go see John Huthrow.
I don't like the color, you know? I like blue, the sailboat. What a terrible color.
Gee. Well, I got it, Bob, so we're not chasing it.
Well, I'm just saying, you asked my opinion, I can... Wow, it's, it's, they're all in unison with the, uh...
You don't like the sound of it very long?
The other one I don't like is that bottom, Montgomery.
I think it looks so nice.
I'd rather have it. Brown, like the wood, the wood, and then we had the...
Earth tones, they went from sifted letters to earth tones.
All right, sifted letters you want changed, or the whole sign?
I don't like the green sign up on the, it'll look like a white.
Now, that one there, we can, we can hold off on, I think the marking for the, for down, that's mine, I, young man. In the back of my book, hard.
I'll make a motion to allow us to order the three parking signs from Flying Cow from Manchester, Vermont.
Well, wait a minute, you can, you can make a motion to accept all the signs. I'm just saying that I don't like it, there's three of them. If you guys want to have those signs and you've already talked to Kelly, that's fine, but I'm just telling you, personally, I don't like that. I'm not going to hurt my feelings if you go ahead, but I'm just saying, it's up to you, whatever you want to do.
He's on record as opposed. But not firmly.
Make a motion to get all four signed.
I'll amend my motion then.
Wait, 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 wait. Roberts will go order here.
I made the motion.
Okay. You want all four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's... I'm going to amend it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion?
I already had that.
You're right. All in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, aye.
All right. Three to one.
Can you count two, I said aye, aye twice.
Oh, okay. All righty. Anything else?
That's all I have, my kids.
All right, trustee Moore.
I have nothing.
Oh, I like you. Thank you, trustee Moore. Trustee Burtz.
Uh, request an executive session to discuss police personnel.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by who? Jefferson?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Jefferson. Roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Oh, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Carol.
Ted.
Arsen. Brian.
Just to inform the board that Friday night, we had another major water leak up in the back of Columbus Drive, and we got done about 9:00 at night, we were pretty wet and cold. It was a long night.
What class, where was that?
Columbus Drive, up in the back, behind Rodney Racine's old house.
Oh, okay.
A development. It's a ductile iron. A ductile iron, it's a type of a metal pipe that doesn't give, it snaps, it breaks, any kind of movement near it. That's why we replace it with a plastic. We had a pretty late night that night, so I know there were some complaints about there, the water was a little foggy, because the hydrant wasn't flushed enough, but I think the water plant took care of it the next morning. Other than that, we've been doing just our regular routine maintenance. Keep busy.
Thank you, Brian. I open the meeting to the public. At this time, anybody wish to address the board may do so.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you looking at street signs and, excuse me, it reminds me that when I was mayor, we put brand-new streetlights on Lake Street, and you guys removed them and for other, uh, lights. Then I said, well, I didn't want to say nothing. Then I heard that you were going to use it on the Montgomery Street for the new project, but I don't see no new lights. So what happened to them lights?
They still have them.
What are you going to do with them?
I believe that some of them are going up in the library parking lot. That is one of the things that had been discussed.
Well, why couldn't you have them along the lake? They're beautiful poles, you know. They were very expensive.
Number one, they're too high. That is one of the reasons why they were taken down. The other reason why Lake Street was replaced, that they were on one side of the street, and now they're on both sides of the street. And those lights were replaced at no cost to the repairers for that pairs. That was done through the IEB, Energy Official Lights. Same as the lights that are going in down on Montgomery Street, were all bought by IEB.
George, them lights were standard lights approved by the state of New York for the height because of trucks. They don't tell me that, they weren't approved.
What I'm telling you, they were too high for lighting, that's what everybody said. And when they came to us with it.
Why can't you use it by the lake?
I just said that they, they...
I, I represent as a citizen of Plasberg.
What happened was we had, did you come to the...
No, no, I stayed away.
No, you didn't come to the sessions that we had in the Catholic Church basement while we were doing all this?
No.
I, there was about 100 people there, and this is the consensus of people that was in there. And then when we hired a design engineer to do the lake front, right, this is what they came up with. And I think you're going to be very impressed when it's all done, because they're going to be on both sides of the street all the way down as far as, uh, I want to say, uh, maybe sports and pier?
They're on both sides of the lake, as far as, uh, from Lake Street to State Dock.
Yeah.
And then they go on the east side down to the boat launch.
Well, I'm requesting that you use it down there.
Well, we already got some poles for down there.
I know. But put them up in the library.
Yeah, that's what they are. They eventually are going in the library parking lot, but want to do something with that.
You know, another place you could put some of them, George, is the three that Bobby put in the park, in Rouse Park.
That might be good.
Put them in there, they look more antique, and then you could reutilize those aluminum ones on, you know, another wiring job in the village, you know. Because they're very expensive poles.
They're all good storage. Good idea, thanks, Tom. Anybody else? If not, we'll have a motion for recess. 7:42, my dear.